Good evening, everyone. Welcome to one of the last Rose City politics of the year. This is a really special one, though. It's our favorite show where we let loose and we actually speak honestly for the first time in the year about what we feel about all of our elected representatives. Obviously not the first time, but this is the one where we really dive deep into it. We have gone over the past year of work from the councillors all the way up to the mayor. And we put together a piece for BizX magazine. So if you're listening to this, you're getting a bit of a sneak preview on that one. And you know, as I said, we're not going to hold back on this. It's been, it's been a really weird year. There's been a lot of politics that, you know, pandemic politics, outside of pandemic politics, budget politics. It's been, it's been a hell of a year and we've all put together our grades here using the standard D to A range. And we're gonna go through them. We're missing out though, right now on Don Maryfield Jr. Unfortunately, he didn't have the, I guess, the like the moral strength and fortitude to show up and cast these grades himself. He had to run off. I don't know where he is, somewhere on a motorcycle, I would hope. But why don't we dive in? I guess at Ward One, there's not much more to say at the outset right now, then let's get started with Ward One's Fred Francis. And Doug, I'm gonna start you off on this one.
Sure thing. So I gave Fred Francis a D. This is the lowest grade I gave any councillor overall. One of the things that I considered when grading council was where each elected official is in their journey. Councillor Francis is a second term councillor. I think there is some improvement over his first term, particularly in his public communication. But after seven years on the job, I expect more vision, more of an interest in broad issues that impact the community. And frankly, more of a work ethic from a councillor. So I gave him a D.
We've talked about this before, Doug, and I'm sorry, I guess we're gonna do the conversational format right now for it. Do you think, is he doing well, though, in his ward specifically? Because I know that you've said that at least about halfway through the year that you didn't think he was holding up, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Where do you think he's that inner ward contrasted to, you know, that overall picture of his evolution as a, you know, as a city councillor?
Politics informs everything councillor Francis does. I don't think that's a particularly shocking thing to say about a politician. In his case, he focuses on his areas of strength. If it was possible to have the streets of Southwood Lakes paved with gold, councillor Francis would do that because he sees those sections of Ward One, the southern part below Cabana and the, and, and Southwood Lakes. He sees that as his core, where his base is. He's not wrong. I think what councillor Francis should be thinking about is how to broaden his appeal within his ward. He got over 50% of the vote last time, but it was not a particularly resounding victory for a returning councillor with the Francis name. He was significantly out polled by the mayor in his ward, which is one of the measures that I use to kind of look at how popular a politician is. There's a lot of room for councillor Francis to grow and so far he's failed to grasp the opportunity.
That's interesting. Pat, you have any thoughts on that? Or you want to give your grade?
Uh, I'll just go ahead and give my grade. I think what's interesting, and I don't know if the BizX magazine is out yet, John, is it? Are like, are people, do people have access to it? Not yet.
Early New Year present.
Okay, so we're kind of like doing spoilers here on what's going to be in there.
Don't tell Deb.
I do want to say this, that sometimes I've, I mentioned it in the last show, that I already regret at least one of my grades. And this is why you wait until the end of the semester for the final grade. So given that there have been a few incidents, including the budget, I might adjust as I go along. But the other, the one thing I think listeners should know when they read the BizX magazine, I don't know whether they know this, but when we write our articles, and this is true for this case, we don't know what each other is writing, right? And so it's really interesting to see when they're all in. I know you collate them, John, and then send them in. So you see the sort of, you've written yours and just to see where we differ and where, where we're the same. So in this case, Fred Francis Ward One was also my lowest grade. You, you said at the outset that we ranged from A to D. There's also an F opportunity. I gave Fred Francis a D. I don't think he was an F, but I also gave him my lowest grade. And my issue with Fred Francis is that he's still a one line councillor. He has one frame of reference, and that is, you know, hold the line on taxes. Somebody close to him said that worked for someone else. So just, you know, it works. So keep on going. And that's the one lens in which he sees everything. And I think it's a problematic lens for the city, for the progress of the city in many ways. He offers, he cannot be off script. That's his only line. He can't really go off and talk about anything unless it's scripted for him. This is not what I would expect a, at this point, experienced councillor to be at. I think he is gearing up for the next election. He seemed to sort of move away from the line of hold the line on taxes and tried out make Windsor affordable again very recently. I think that might say anything anyone wants to know that he would go with make Windsor affordable again. I don't know what he's thinking there, but maybe he's right on brand for himself and so maybe my grade is based on the fact that that is not where I think the city needs to go and the type of representation it needs and the type of lens that it needs. So I know that I was harsh. I don't know if we can read what, what we said on, are we allowed to read what we said? I'm just looking at mine.
Yeah, absolutely.
I said, he provides no value added. And if he wasn't the former mayor's brother, no one would bother to pretend.
That was how you really feel, Pat?
Yeah.
I gave him a C minus. Personally, that was my lowest grade as well. Hitting most of the same points as you. I will stress, though, that I try to write my piece before reading all of your pieces, unless I'm doing it at the very last moment, when I crib all of the good points from your pieces and then put it into my little paragraph there. But I wrote that councillor Francis is a faux fiscal conservative who plays the same rhetoric annually, whether it's at budget deliberations to hold the line on taxes. But you know, he's always willing to expense, to support expensive things for his own ward, his constituents, think to Roseland, think to, just think to anything that he supports and the things that he doesn't support. He's always in opposition to supporting anything else in another ward, for the most part. Coming to mind right now is the, the alley standards program where he started to say, oh no, we're gonna just end up making our alleys too nice when I should be the one deciding to give the money to my constituents. So, you know, good for him. He's a true politician. He, he knows exactly what he wants. I just, I agree, though, I don't think that he's necessarily getting there the right way. He would probably be best to, you know, take some advice about what he's looking to do. I thought you would have seen some more moves from him to maybe try to do a mayoral position at this point in his career. But do you think that there's anything more aspirational for him? Or do you think that he is content where he's at?
Doug?
It's an interesting, yeah, sure. It's an interesting question. It sure has been the conversation pretty much since councillor Francis was elected, that eventually he would be seeking the mayor's chair. I think he has ramped up a little bit. And I do think that there, you've, you can see the efforts in that direction. I, I just don't think that, I don't think that he's done what it's going to take to, to achieve that goal. But yeah, I, I think that there's evidence that he's ramping up in that direction.
I know that there were, for sure, when he first ran, I think that everybody assumed that this was sort of the Francis plan for the continuation. But of course, you know, Freddie wasn't ready. I still don't think that he is. And I haven't seen that. I in fact find that he's very disengaged. I don't know that he's enjoying it. And I mean, I don't know the guy, so I don't know what, what he really, really feels and whether he's felt some obligation that he should be in public office. But it, it doesn't suit him in the way that you see someone that has any particular passion. I'm looking at Dawn's, Dawn gave him a C minus and, and you know, Dawn is our, you know, conservative on the panel. So Dawn would be somebody who would like that kind of message, but I'm gonna read Dawn's for a moment. And he says, uses quote, "looking out for taxpayers" unquote, when convenient, unless it's a capital project in his ward or promoted by the mayor. Claims Roseland is profitable. Fun fact, it isn't. And I think it goes back to what you said, John, and that is that, that the faux part. This, this, we, we tend to think people who want to hold the line on taxes and look at that as the lens as being the ones who are going to save us money when, when there's definitely another perspective, which is if you invest and fix things and maintain things in the long run, you're going to be saving money when you take a look at the future, not the quick gains. And so I don't think that Fred Francis has a plan. I don't think that Fred Francis has a vision, and that's probably the really most concerning thing in the event that he's thinking to, to run for higher office or to run for the mayor's chair. I certainly don't think that he would be capable, a capable mayor, at least from what we've seen so far. And I don't think he would be successful if he were to run against Drew Dilkins, who seems to be going in that direction to run again.
Well, you know, without trying to talk too much about Drew Dilkins, he, he's running a citywide campaign now that's trying to target, you know, the, the suburbs and the, the, the urban area, if you will, in Windsor. Whereas, you know, Fred Francis is really just doing like his, his ward. So if it is a mayoral strategy, it's not city-based and it's gonna be a really tough one to eke by. But just to go through those grades again, then for you all listening, unless there's any extra points you guys want to make.
I just want to make one more point, which is really interesting, I think. And that is that there are at least two councillors that get criticized for being very focused on, two other councillors get focused on being focused on their ward. And it's really interesting that we're raising the, the fact that Fred Francis is really focused on his ward and maybe even just a very specific part of his ward, sort of the really affluent part of his ward. And he doesn't get criticized publicly really enough for that, considering others try to paint other councillors as very ward specific. And yet, when we get to them, we'll see that if there is any vision on council, it really comes from them.
Yeah, just one more comment based on what Pat had to say, because I think it's really interesting. Fred Francis skates, I think, a lot in this town and he gets away with a lot and he gets away with, I believe, a subpar effort. There are two reasons for that. One, I think, is the long shadow of former Mayor Eddie Francis. There is a lot of built up goodwill and probably a lot of built up fear and intimidation that people feel about Eddie Francis. And I think Fred Francis benefits from that. And the other thing is, I think that Fred Francis has done one thing successfully, and that's manage expectations down. People don't expect much of him. He's not attacked the way that other councillors are attacked, in part because the folks who do the attacking are allied with Fred Francis, but partly because people just don't expect much from him after seven years on council.
Lowered expectations. Go through those grades then. Don Maryfield Jr., C minus. Doug Sartori, D. Pat Papadakis, D. John Liptke, C minus. For Ward Ones, Fred Francis. Let's move to Ward Two, Fabio Costante. Lots of different grades here in contrast to Fred Francis. I'll start out if you don't mind. Councillor Costante lives and breathes Ward Two is what I wrote, and he is an effective advocate, champion and councillor for both his constituents and their issues. Ward Two has seen meaningful investments during his first term, and I expect he'll remain in politics for quite some time. It's a very different Ward Two than we have seen in the past with him. Lots of community building, lots of targeted investments, lots of actual representation rather than just parroting, whether it be the city line or by extension, the mayor's office line. I, I think he's a really effective councillor, as I said.
So I tend to agree with you and my grade was a B plus for councillor Costante, which is a significant drop from last year's grade. And I want to explain that. Councillor Costante has so many tools. He is intelligent. He's articulate. And he is well educated and obviously does his homework. He, his participation in debate is often useful and not just useful in terms of advocating for his position, but useful in terms of helping the public understand the issue. So for all those reasons, especially because he's in his first term, I think councillor Costante is a good councillor, a good solid councillor. I do think that, I do think that expectations were sky high for him, especially after a pretty good first year. And he has come down to earth a little bit, and, and that's the reason why his grade is lowered. What I think councillor Costante needs to do in my books in order to get a higher grade, you know, in the future, is, is to articulate a vision for the city, be a little bit more visionary, be a little bit less reactive. I often feel like things happen to councillor Costante rather than councillor Costante making things happen. That may just be a perception, but it's something that he would want to work on.
That's interesting.
That's sorry. I, I think my, my mouse needs a new battery. I get, I actually get teased that I use a mouse, but so I'm hard, I'm having a hard time muting and unmuting here. Sorry about that. Sorry, George, you wanted to go in there and I'll come in right after you.
No, I was just vamping for you. It's
Okay, thank you. So, you know, Dawn's not on the show. I told him I was gonna tease him for his grade. He gave councillor Costante the highest grade with an A plus. I think I disagree, not because I don't think that councillor Costante isn't really, really good for War Two, but I don't think that he's quite at that level yet and for, for a lot of reasons. I do think that he's a good presence on council when he feels motivated, when he cares about an issue. Sometimes I also find him a little disengaged. But in it, and that's, that might just be me, but that's how I see it. He is a really good questioner. Now that goes probably with his skill, being a lawyer, he can ask really good questions. He asks them in a way as Doug sort of referred to, that a person can follow and, and get to the answers and get to, to, to where he wants to go with that issue. I, I think that there have been some issues where he has shown a tremendous amount of angst in getting to a decision. And, you know, he, although he is a first term councillor, and I think he's performed very well. He's, it's not a first time go around. It is an elected official. He was, you know, previously on the school board. He certainly has experience. So the, the, the level of angst that I see sometimes on those issues, I'm not really sure. Sometimes you, you have to make hard decisions as, as an elected official. And if you have, if you know where you want to go and you're guided by a certain principle or standard, yes, you may be disappointed that you may let a few people down, or this may not work for everyone. But I find that he has a difficult time owning something. And you know, if he's gonna want to please everyone all the time or, or be liked all the time, then it's not going to be a fun time for him perhaps. And this is just the, the nature of, of politics and, and, and being elected. So I don't know what the solution to that is. I also think that I, there was a Q and A and it was just before the budget, if you remember, I think it was organized, I'm sure, I think it was organized by the Centre for Cities. And one of the last questions that the host, one of the hosts there, Annika Schmidt, asked all those members present, and to be clear, not all councillors were there, so kudos to the councillors who were there, including Fabio Costante. And she asked, you know, what is their vision? And wards, ward councillors, you know, Reno Bordelain, Ward Three, Chris Holt, Ward Four. If you watch that, and I think I'm pretty sure it's taped, if you watch it, they came forward with some really clear vision. And Fabio, just if you, if you listen to his answer, he just couldn't land it. He couldn't, you know, he was all over the place. He said a lot of really nice things, but he did not answer the question. And so I gave him a B minus, which I think is still a strong grade. I think there's room for improvement with Fabio Costante. And I think the, the main thing is that there's the potential for improvement for Fabio Costante. And I look forward to, to seeing that as, as we continue in the next year.
Pat, you really bring up a, a really important point, and I just want to build on it. I, I think that every councillor at some point in their first term figures out what they think their job is. And I think there are a lot of different answers to that, to that problem or question. And there, there's not necessarily one right one. And if you look at councillor Costante's behaviour from a thousand feet away, I think what he would like to do is be seen in his ward as an advocate and be a bridge between the mayor's agenda and what the folks in his ward think that they want and need. And looking at it through that lens, you can, I, I think that kind of explains a lot of the agonizing and the hemming and hawing. He's grappling with that role. I'm not sure that that is the right role for someone of councillor Costante's talent to, to decide to play. But if he's, if he's grappling with that, it, it kind of makes some sense, I think.
Just, I guess, to further build on it, I thought it's really interesting how you say that he has a hard time taking ownership over the things that he's done, Pat. Because if you look at just the track record for just this last year, pretty impressive with the things that he brought forward. He was the one who proposed the question for the vacant home tax and look at where we're at now with that. He was the one who sought for movement on the citywide rodent bylaw. That was a question that he proposed. What was the alley standards as well? So I mean, there's a lot there that he has accomplished and he could say, I've done this and this is why it works. I guess I wonder, you know, first term, he's gonna be able to show these to his constituents and literature, and they're gonna see the actual effects of these programs reasonably quickly over the next 12 months where money starts to pour into it. I mean, especially, I guess, you know, look to 80 knocks, we're gonna start to see that starting to manifest itself. I do wonder, though, if, you know, the next term around, you start to see a bit more of an assertive and aggressive at the same time, looking to build upon that legacy, sort of going, you know, I've figured out how things work here. I can be a bit more assertive about it. But I, I do find it interesting that he's not out there, you know, just doing media laps and shaking hands with community leaders, saying, look what I've done. I want you on my side publicly because let's be honest, this is the election season. We're in it right now. It's just the pre-election season, right?
Well, as I started, when I said, I said, I think he's been a very effective councillor for War Two. And, but, but I'm also critical of, of Ward One Fred Francis for the same reason. I think that there are issues that you want to bring forward that are important to your own constituents in the ward that has elected you. But you're also a city councillor, a city councillor, which means that there are going to be issues on the table that may not affect your immediate constituents that are still important. And you can't sell out the community. And sometimes if you're gonna want to play politics with where the mayor is at and try to balance those things, some things are going to suffer as a result. I also think that there are some issues within his own ward that he had angst about. I think the 80 knocks issue was a really interesting one, and we'll see where that goes. And of course, that ties into the fact that, we mentioned this on, on the last show, where we talked about the budget and the transit issue. In fact, what has happened, and the reason we're critical of the transit decision is that what happened at that budget is not that people did not get the improvements or movement towards implementing a master plan that exists to improve transit. But in fact, the decision is regressive as far as transit is concerned. And specifically because it had to accommodate this whole idea of what was gonna happen with the 80, with 80 knocks and getting folks to the new, to the Lancer Centre. So there are some issues there that were difficult. There's no question for Fabio. And I do want to say, I, I do, you know, like what I see there. He certainly, you know, one of my better votes, but, or one of my better grades. But I, I don't think he's the A plus yet, and that was given to him. So that's, that's my point of reference. And I think while there are some good things interesting to watch, especially, I don't want to be hypocritical. There are things that you need to do in your own ward, and then there are some, some big, big decisions for the city that there's principle involved there, and I'm gonna be watching that.
You know, that, that distinction between city councillor and ward councillor, it's, it's such an important one. And I do wonder, you know, how many city councillors we've actually had over the past while in terms of votes that apply for the whole city in a positive way. But to go through those again, for Ward Two's Fabio Costante, Don Maryfield with the rare A plus, Doug Sartori with a B plus, Pat Papadakis, B minus, and myself with an A minus. Moving right along to Ward Three, Reno Bordelain. Doug, why don't you start off?
Sure thing. So full disclosure, which won't be surprising to folks who follow this show closely. I know councillor Bordelain pretty well. I don't think that you need to be close to him to see the passion and the commitment and the sheer capacity for work that he brings to the job. Reno Bordelain has articulated an independent vision of the city that is distinct from the vision of the mayor. He has done that over the past seven years. And I think that from a position that is pretty, pretty weak when you consider the, you know, the folks around the table. He's an urban core councillor of which they are the minority on council. He, he has a different agenda from the mayor and often works in opposition to the mayor. And despite all that, despite those headwinds, he's gotten a lot done. And I think that that is the reason why I gave him an A grade. We need more people like councillor Bordelain on city council. If, if I had to, if I had to find an area for improvement, I think that one of the challenges that councillor Bordelain faces goes back to something that I touched on a little earlier, and that is the conflict between councillor Bordelain and Mayor Dilkins. It's, there's no question that, that Mayor Dilkins sees Reno Bordelain as a political foe and has used the tools at his disposal to undermine councillor Bordelain politically. And I don't think that that necessarily reflects on councillor Bordelain's performance. It would be nice if, if he could find a way, and by he, I mean councillor Bordelain, if he could find a way to make, to work with the mayor and make more of a synthesis of their views for the betterment of the city. But it takes two to tango, and I just don't think that he has a willing dance partner.
I agree. I agree with a lot of what Doug said and mostly for the same reasons. I also know councillor Bordelain very well. And I also think that you don't really need to know him to see, you know, just turn on the radio. He's, he's, he's always talking about issues. And, and he doesn't need to. I mean, I don't think, I don't think he's matched. And in fact, I think I used the word peerless in my, in my grade that I gave him. I gave him an A. The, I don't know a councillor who works harder than Reno Bordelain. I don't know how many committees he, he's on. And I think this is something that, you know, that probably should be somewhere like, what is everybody on? He seems to be on a lot. And that's because a lot of those other committees and agencies impact the urban core, the downtown that he's on. I, he's a colleague of mine on the downtown Windsor BIA, so I get to see his work up close and personal in, in what he can deliver and, and, and how much he cares for all the issues, not just the urban issues. And, and that's really interesting that he sort of painted this such. The other thing I find interested in how he's painted versus what I know is that, and he, especially since the last budget, and there's certainly been media on this, that, you know, Chris Holt, Reno Bordelain voted against the budget, the progressive councillor. So that's really interesting to me. Not that I don't think he's progressive. I think, you know, but I think that we often assume or it's implied that being progressive is also not necessarily fiscally conservative, which is so amusing to me, because I think in any other world, he would be a, you know, like a red Tory. He is fiscally conservative. It's just that the way to get to fiscal conservatism to save money is through progressive strategies and looking at the long term. I don't think a lot of that has been dissected. And it goes to what, goes back to what Doug has said, which is who owns the podium? Who owns the, you know, this microphone? Who gets to go out there day in and day out and actually hammer that? Take the really good ideas. And if you, you know, we're gonna get to the mayor, but a lot of the good things that have happened have been the ideas of those progressive councillors that have been co-opted by the mayor. And I'm not complaining about that, by the way. I'm simply pointing it out that he I'm simply pointing it out that he, the mayor did learn to play the game a little bit because he had to with the sort of the makeup on this council. Certainly, at least while he was feeling his way where the votes are going to be. And much of the progress and the really good things that happened, happened really early in this term when the mayor was doing it. Now that he has, you know, smugger, back to smug and strut, you're, you're seeing a different type of game being played. But going back to Reno Bordelain, I think this, again, this is a counselor with a lot of vision, a lot of principle, a lot of what he wants to see for the betterment of this community. It aligns with my values, so that's part of it. But I also think he's true to principle. I think if there's any criticism of him, it's that he's too engaged, frankly. Although I've seen some improvement like on social media, I think he felt like he needed to respond to everything and every critic and explain things. And I think that's really important. It's not that it's not. But I don't think you, you necessarily need to get into the weeds with everyone. And I think there's been some improvement there, but, and that too, although it's a criticism, goes back to the place that he really feels that getting people, you know, hearing, listening to people, adjusting, which he does quite well, having those things inform his decision, but also feeling the need to explain it from a big picture perspective, sometimes to people that will never get it. If, I mean, if that's a criticism, I mean, it's quibbles in comparison.
You know, I don't, I don't necessarily see it that same, that same way, Pat. I thought, I agree with you that the responding to every point on social media was something that he was doing a lot of at the outset. And, you know, that just, that leads to more problems with, if someone's coming to have an argument with you on your Facebook page, you're not going to convince the person. And at the end of the day, you're just going to end up rolling around in the mud too, right? And that's, you're not really setting yourself apart as an elected official, which is why I put, you know, he is a calls it as he sees a counselor, which is great. It's refreshing, but it's also gotten him into trouble in the past with IC complaints. I've had phone calls with him, you know, on the record, off the record, in person, he is who he is. There's, there's no real politicking going on other than these are my values. This is the vision, and here's how I want to accomplish it. I think he's got, you know, great priorities for the city at large. I think having been able to bring some of them about over the past year has been a great thing. I laugh at you, Doug, or at the point when you say it would be nicer to see him and Dilkins working together on anything. You're not going to see them be able to agree on a lunch order, let alone policies at the city level. But it would be nice, sure. No, I gave him an A minus, though. I think he's doing a good job. I think that the media, for all that it can do under its conditions in the city with, you know, not the most funding and not the best ability to provide context. It's easy to fall into that role, as you were both saying, that, you know, he's presented as this progressive who's just a tax and spend. I mean, if, if this was an issue of, you know, actual fiscal prudence, the way the media would report it with Reno is Reno wants to go spend a hundred million on a new air conditioning system when we just keep buying bags of ice. What's wrong with the ice bags we keep buying, right? So it's the short-term thoughts versus the long-term thoughts. But I've said this before as well. I think with the Windsor Works report, it's sort of pushing the city more on a progressive platform than it would be if it was just individual counselors that were trying to do it. The mayor still has to have that buy-in and thread that needle. So that gives an opportunity here for Counselor Bordelain as well to build up on what the media wants. So I disagree with you a bit more, Doug, is like the media loves the, the fight between Mayor Dilkins and Counselor Bordelain. It's an asset that's there for him to grab onto if he wants to. It allows for him to be bolstered up far more than most of his colleagues on council, just because of that sexiness of the fight. Also, we know we were talking about with Fred Francis, probably not doing anything further than, you know, at the ward level right now. So I think the opportunity is there for him to, you know, take the mantle of the fighter if he wants it. It's just about how nuanced do you want to be in pursuing that fight without alienating, you know, voters writ large and your constituents? Now, we didn't do Don. I'll read Don's right now. He gave Reno a B, breaking from our As across the board right now, just a straight B. And Don said, my counselor in Ward three really cares about the state of downtown and responds to citizen concerns, even my constant complaining quite well. Get some alley lighting. I think Don's B is a little bit low.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think that that's an interesting, interesting to look at the grades across the board. And I struggle to understand how you, you know, you give Reno a B and, and others an A, but we each get to weigh in with our own opinion.
Don's wrong, as usual.
Yes.
Reno just gave Don a bad Christmas or birthday gift is all. The effects are still there. Let's go, though, to Ward for Chris Holt. Pat, do you want to start?
Sure. I have to just use my mouse here to remember what I said about Chris Holt, although I think I can remember off the top. And, and I, I gave Chris Holt an A minus, I guess, only to distinguish him from Reno Bordelain. And I don't know why I needed to do that, and, and I might elevate him more since, since the budget meeting. You know, to me was not just when I was grading, it wasn't just, you know, what standard do we use? Let's face it. It's, it's very, I found it a very challenging exercise. Let me say that. And so I struggled with where, how to grade, what I'm grading on, whether I was using the same criteria for all, because there were things like, how do they do their constituency work? You know, how are they in their ward? How are they in the media? How are they around the table? How are they with the issues? So sometimes, you know, the weighting of what came forward was different for one than the other. So obviously, we're not, this is not a science, and this is not how we would grade in, in, in the classroom, if you will, on some standard. So having said that, I think Chris Holt is very similar to Reno Bordelain in this, to this extent. They're both very authentic, and authentic is very refreshing in politics. You, just as with Reno Bordelain, what you see is what you get. I think that's true with Chris Holt as well. He made no secrets about where his priorities lay and what his values were when he was elected to city council. And for those that complain about politics, here you have a counselor who's kept true to those that, and I have no doubt will continue to stay true to those forever. He stands for good things. So that's, that's the other thing. And, and I think what I said in my notes is that good things have happened because of Chris Holt, Chris Holt's presence on council. I given, I gave him an A minus, and I think since the budget meeting, that's a strong A for Chris Holt, no matter how you slice it for me.
Yeah, I'll jump in here. I gave Chris an A. You know, in previous, in previous iterations of this report card, I talked about Chris being dominant politically in his ward, being the, you know, very much the Walkerville counselor. And, and while I still think that's all true, I want to take a little bit of a different view on Chris Holt. As you say, Pat, Chris Holt cares so deeply about the issues that matter to him, and he clearly has a vision for the city that he would like. I still think that, that Counselor Holt's vision is not necessarily in line with the broader appetites of Windsorites outside of the core of the city and particularly outside Ward four. But that's not a bad thing. He is pushing a perspective that it's really important to hear right now. I often find myself on the same side of issues as Counselor Holt, and I don't think that's because he and I line up so much ideologically as that the pendulum is so far in the opposite direction that there, there, everything that he wants to get done is, is needed just to bring some balance back to the city. That doesn't mean that Chris Holt's vision is the, you know, what every Windsorite would want, or even what every Windsorite would need. But I, I think that, I think that in the context of the bigger picture of council, he's a really important voice and a pretty effective voice. On the negative side, although Counselor Holt, I think, is as visible as he needs to be to secure his reelection and to advance his agenda, you can't help but notice that his public engagement has fallen off in recent years. Chris Holt tried a lot of things to engage with the public, especially in his first term, especially early. And, you know, not everything is going to stick, and that's okay. But I do think that he's maybe retreated from that, that approach a little bit and is a little bit more comfortable in, you know, talking to people that agree with him. And, and maybe if there's any room for improvement with Chris Holt, given his role and what he does on council, I think that maybe engaging in conversation a little bit more respectfully and, and going out and looking for opportunities to engage with Windsorites might be a good thing for him to do.
I just want to jump in there for a minute. You know, what's really interesting about Chris Holt, and there have been, we're going to eventually get to the mayor, I know. And, and part of, we've talked about it before, so this won't come as a surprise, is how much effort and, and funds are invested in the mayor's media circles. He sometimes has to bring in the counselor. So he's doing, he does a lot of announcements, right? So he sometimes, these happen in people's ward, so he has to bring along the counselors. And the counselors get invited to, you know, a ribbon cutting on the pavement of a road. I know for a fact that Chris Holt, Chris Holt gets invited when these things happen in Ward four. And while there are things that are outside the normal course of city business or, or particular investment that he might do that, but I know for a fact that he's also said, you know what, I'm not going to that. And it's not because he doesn't care that something has happened in his ward. But I think he sees it as, listen, it's our job to pave that road or whatever happened. So why are we going to do a media circus on this and trot me out? And, and I'm just, he's just not going to play the game. And I think that, that advice that you're, you're suggesting, Doug, is probably a good advice for someone who may have aspirations to run for another level or to possibly, you know, see himself in the mayor's chair. I just don't think that Chris Holt is there. And so he doesn't give a rat's ass to say that that's what I'm going to do, as long as I'm doing a good job and my constituents know it. And that's who I would have to go back to, to, to seek validation for reelection, if that's where he goes. But, and, and what's really fascinating is despite that he does have a big picture view of the city. In fact, when you're talking about things like, you know, climate change, for goodness sakes, it's even bigger than that. But, but he's not going to play the game, and he's, he's just not going to do that. So I think he's made a conscious choice. It's not like it slipped his mind or somebody needs to send him the rulebook of what good politicians, politicians, capital P, do. He's not interested in that. So I think it's probably good advice for someone who's got aspirations. I don't think he has those, and so he's just going to stick to, to what he does. That's my view of it.
That's, that's a really good point, Pat. You know, I look at it in the same vein as that he's not playing the game. It's, I'm not willing to let you launder your reputation or your minor goals through me trying to latch on to my broader picture here. It's, it's an interesting PR strategy to not engage in those ways because you are giving a win to someone else to come into your backyard. But at the same time, as you've both said, I mean, his voters know who he is. They know what he stands for, and they've decided that that's the vision that they want. They want someone who is tackling climate change at the council level, someone who is very caring about densification, about transportation, about having livable neighborhoods, about having a livable city, about stopping sprawl. So they know what he is all about. And if he's happy with where he's at right now, and let's be honest, he's a very, very busy man. He works full-time. He has his own private business. He's doing city council. He sits on ABCs, right? This is, if, if there's no bigger step right now, and he's just happy banking this political capital in his backyard, it works, he'll get reelected, and you can build from there. I don't think that he's necessarily alienating anyone in the city because I don't think people who were against him at the outset were going to switch their mind and start voting for him because he kept advocating these specific issues. Let's be honest. I mean, again, like someone like Chris and Fred Francis, I don't expect they're going to have the easiest time choosing on a restaurant to get together, let alone splitting appetizers or something. But his constituents know who he is, and they seem to like it. So I give him an A minus. And as for the engagement piece, you know, I think you can take it or not.
So Don said, Don gave him a B and said that, quote, does a good job for his board, cares about the serious issues in the city, big promoter of transit and urban intensification, bit of a narrow focus. I think that's interesting. That was the end of Don's comment. I think it's interesting. Again, we'll make the show, the, the criticism of Don's votes that I suppose narrow focus is, is an interesting perspective to call it that. I don't think it's a narrow focus. I think it's a focus. It just may not be everyone's focus. I don't think it's a narrow focus. In fact, I think it's, it's very much, if anything, a very big picture focused, frankly, of the city.
I just wanted to raise one more point about Counselor Holt before we move on. When you look around the table, Counselor Holt is the only person who you would call working class. He works at, at an auto factory. He, he has a very Windsor job. And it's really interesting to me that Windsor politics doesn't necessarily elevate folks like that as much as you might expect. You would expect to see a lot of people with that type of background and that, that type of perspective around the council table, and we just don't. And I think that's really valuable as well. It's definitely not front and center for Chris Holt. He's not the stereotypical auto worker, doesn't have perhaps some perspectives that would line up with a guy who builds 14-cylinder engines for a living or whatever it is that he does. But I think it's really interesting, and it, it is interesting to think about why it is that, and not just on this council, but for many councils in the past, Chris Holt is the only person who has that background and, and that perspective on things.
Interesting point.
It is an interesting point. I don't have a response to it. It's, it's, it's an interesting one just to chew on, though.
Well, it's also interesting that the mayor in the, in the budget meeting went personal on that very fact against Chris Holt, which is just fascinating.
Seeing it as an attack point, yeah, to be able to go after what makes up this community, but against someone who is living and breathing it.
I think especially for Mayor Dilkins to start talking resumes is, is pretty interesting. I personally, if I had Drew Dilkin's resume, I don't know that I would be so quick to jump on what someone else does for a living.
Let's head over to Ward five with Counselor Sleman. I'll start out, I gave him a C. I said, there's no doubt that he cares about his ward and constituents, but I don't know, his performance at council and committee levels leaves a lot to want. It's been subpar. There was obviously the, the issue that popped up with him having to ask how to vote or not how to ask how to vote and having to receive constant support from within the mayor's boardroom to be able to take part in these Zoom calls. And that's not a, not a slight on him, you know, his age or anything. It's, it's a slight on the level of engagement of this counselor to even have to ask those kinds of questions. How were we supposed to vote is just, it, it leaves so much to want. There's no doubt, though, that he really likes what he does. I don't know if that he necessarily enjoys the work of it, but he enjoys the, the handshaking. He enjoys the representation. And he's, you know, he, he's well-liked by his community as well, by his ward. He gets reelected. So I think that he is one as well that has found that pattern of being able to do, you know, I'll say the, the bare minimum that's required to keep getting those votes to get reelected. But if he's not running again, and I don't know if we have any indications that he is or isn't doing anything at this point, quite frankly, he's going to be up against a large number of candidates, and that could work out in his favor again. It's hard to say.
I'll jump in here. I, I think that he shouldn't have run last time. And so I don't know what he's going to decide this time, but I, I, I don't think he should have run last time. And you, you mentioned he's well-liked, John, and so he should be. He's a lovely man. He's a lovely person. He works hard. I think he actually enjoys being on council. I think he enjoys. He, he has all the, the right values of a, of a person that, and he's also genuine. I don't think he's genuine in his voting record, but I think he's, he, he's, he's a genuinely Um, I don't think he's genuine in his voting record, uh, but I think he's, he, he's, he, he's a genuinely nice person. That is very different than grading him as a city councillor. I gave him a D plus. Um, I think it was, you know, um. The second lowest grade that I gave. I think it was a very difficult one for me to give that grade. Because I think that he, uh, has served faithfully to his constituents and tried. To, uh, be faithful to his constituents, although sometimes selling out because he basically needs to know. How he is supposed to vote, which essentially means, you know, what does the mayor want me to do? He does a disservice. And so. Um, it's very difficult to, you know, bring those things together and say, how can you have something, somebody so lovely? And who actually cares and wants to do a good job and at the same time, um, get into this situation. It, it is an ageism. Um, I know that there are some other issues why he needs, you know, the technological help. But the technological help was not using the computer. The, the help was much more than that. Certainly we saw that and that's very disappointing. You know, it would be the same thing if, if, you know, sometimes doctors have to say to somebody who's older. Um, sorry, but you should not be driving anymore. This is not an indication of whether they're a, a, a great person. It's like. Are you, um, effective, uh, you know, as the city councillor or are you not? That is really what it comes down to. And for whatever the reasons are, um, at this point, I think that, um. He has served well for this community. I would like to see him, uh, leave knowing that he served really well. It's difficult to give him that grade because of, for all the reasons that I've mentioned. But at the same time, we have to take a look at, is he serving the, the good of the community? Frankly, if you, we want to give the mayor two votes, um, then let's just realign our, uh, our governance structures and bylaws and give him that.
Yeah, I agonized over this vote more or this, this grade more than any other, um, councillor Sleman's conduct. Um, not only during the faithful council meeting that was made so much of when he, um, made a comment into a hot mic. Uh, to someone in the room about how he had voted or how he thought the vote was supposed to go. Um, that, that incident was really on my mind here. Um. I think that when you don't do your own work in a role like this, and I don't mean, you know, consulting and leaning on folks. But when you are told what to say and what to do and just go along, um, I think that that is. That merits a failing grade. Um, but in the end I decided to, uh, believe. Take councillor Sleman at his word rather than listen to the evidence of my own lying eyes. Um, and disregard that incident in putting my grade together. Um. I, I, I agree with much of what's been said. Residents in, in Ward five, they understand. Councillor Sleman's commitment to the ward, um, his work ethic, uh, his, his commitment to constituency issues. He is, um, you know, he, there is no question that he has a tremendous passion for this job. Uh, the reason that I gave him a C minus, which is my second lowest grade, is that I, I just am not sure about his judgment. And I'm not sure about, um, the level of independence that he has in performing his work. Uh, I tend to agree also with much of what's been said about whether or not it's a good idea for councillor Sleman to run again. You know, incumbency is powerful and I take your point about the potential for a, a big divided field, John. But think about what happened to Hillary Payne last time around, when the electors in, in, um, Ward nine decided that. Councillor Payne was, was, had they'd seen enough from him, they weren't going to get anything new and they wanted to make a change. Um, their, their verdict was delivered quite brutally, if you remember that in 2018. And I think councillor Sleman could be headed for a similar result. He should leave a winner, uh, with his head high, knowing that he has worked hard for his community. But I, I definitely think it's time to hang him up.
Well, we'll do Don's grade and then move on here. It was a C minus that Don gave. He echoes hard worker for his constituents. I feel on bigger citywide issues, he just votes the way the mayor wants. So, you know, no surprise there. We've all sort of echoed the same sentiments about this one. Uh, let's move on to Ward six, keep this moving though. Joanne Geniak. Um, we'll start out with Don, why not? He can't say anything. Long-term councillor, well-liked in her ward, recently pushing back on big-ticket projects the mayor promotes. B plus. I think that's a fair one for her and let's, we'll go through ours and we can sort of circle back to what Don says, because I think you're going to see a. Remarkably similar vibes from across ours. I gave a B. I said councillor Geniak knows how to play the game and she does it well. Even when pearl clutching about cannabis, she knows what her constituents want. She's willing to be mocked by others because she knows that it doesn't matter. It's been interesting. I agree with Don, seeing her break away from the traditional block with the mayor that she has, uh, served on for a number of years and with friendly councillors. At times this term, I've said before this year, is that an indication that she's not running again and she's just looking to, you know, throw some, uh. Some bombs into the road to reestablish what her legacy has been. We've talked about that before. I think there's some merit in that conversation. But I give her a B. She does a good job, even if I disagree with her and where she comes from.
So I gave councillor Geniak a B plus. Um, I agree with much of what has been said. I, councillor Geniak is one of the smartest and most experienced people around the table. There's no question that she has a distinct vision for the city and I think that that has. Uh, become more clear over the course of Mayor Delkens' term as, um, they have diverged on issues. But, um, I also think that with all of those tools, all of that experience, all of that capability. She hasn't done that much with it in this term, uh, especially this past year. I think she has taken a bit of an easy road. Uh, you know, John, um, your point about the pearl clutching, I think that there are a lot of low-hanging fruit. Uh, issues that councillor Geniak goes after for the sole purpose of generating a little bit of ink. Um, for, to remind her constituents that she is there and what she stands for. But there's not a lot of meat or substance behind them and I just expect better, um, for, from someone who has decades of experience. And all of the, the tools that councillor Geniak has. Um, I also think she's probably running again, just based on, uh, just based on the fact that she is. Going to this effort there, you know, the, the, um, the helicopter tours, the cannabis stuff. Um, why would you chase this stuff, um, unless you want to run again? I don't think that Joanne Geniak is particularly ego-driven, doesn't necessarily need to see her name in light. So I think that she's doing that for a purpose. I just think that she could do so much more with the tools that she has B plus.
Right. So there, there's an example of, um, a, a councillor that won't say no when the mayor pulls up the podium in, in her ward. Um, I, I think some of our listeners may find some of these grades for Joanne Geniak, um, because. Some of what she stands for may not align to with, with some of the, um, more progressive councillors, if you will. Um, and yet, uh, I agree. I think that, uh, she's one of the best men on council. Um. She, what she brings is a lot of institutional memory. She's the longest-serving, uh, uh, councillor. And I think that that's important to have institutional memory, but I think she does a disservice with it. She's gotten to the point where she does a disservice with it on this council. It is predictable. She will start with. I remember when, I remember when. And, and i- it's all about, you know, we can't set precedent. You know, we can't always continue to do things the way that we did, especially when we know where we have issues and, and, um, I think she is. Absolutely impeding progress at this point with this, um, I remember when. I think, um, I don't know if she intends to run again, as Doug has mentioned. Um, I don't think she's certainly at the point where. Uh, what we said about, um, councillor Sleman, but I think her legacy will actually be determined on whether she chooses to run. And, uh, for similar reasons, I think that she's had a good run, whether you've agreed with her on positions or not. She has served well in public office. She's smart. Um, and, and this is, this is really the time to go. I think she per- possibly would have been somebody to have run for mayor. Um, she could have run for mayor. Uh, what, back when Drew Delkens ran for mayor and I think she could have, uh, um, been elected as mayor. So I don't know with the passage of another two terms, um, after that, uh, where she goes from here. Uh, this is not to poke at older people. Um, and, and she's not that she's old, uh, but I do think that she lacks the vision of the progress of the city. I think it's time to have someone who continuously looks back in Ward six. I think Ward six needs someone. Who is going to bring them, you know, someone more forward-thinking, if you will. And, um. I think her legacy will actually be determined, uh, on whether she chooses to run again and, uh, or not.
First elected in two thousand three. Which is just, it's, it's a mind-boggling thing to think about. And, and you know, I'll just, I'll just say this, Pat, in regards to the institutional memory. There's nothing wrong with having institutional memory coming in for, you know, here's how things happen before. Here's the way that it used to be done. The problem with the institutional memory is, is when you're bringing in institutional memory from a time that was, you know, arguably not a great time. I don't want you bringing in the institutional memory from your time on the Enron board. That doesn't sound too great right now, you know. And I, I'm being very hyperbolic with that one there, but we're at a very different place in the city than we were in two thousand three. Um, you know, and I just think that she'll continually be offside on issues moving forward. Um, but she has her position and she might want to just hold on to it. We'll see.
I agree with you, Don. I, I, John, John, I think that, um, the, the problem is you can have institutional memory. To say, this is what we tried and hey, also it didn't work. She thinks everything that was tried worked. So where, where do you go with that?
Uh, that's, that's the definition of insanity, right? I believe, to keep trying the same mistakes repeatedly. Let's go to Ward seven though, before I put my feet any further in my mouth on that one. Juin Gill. I'm going to stick with Don. This is fun. New councillor getting up to speed and so far not doing anything to make me look at him sideways. Think he will be good for the ward. C plus. Just a fair one. Doug, I'll let you pick up.
Sure thing. I also gave councillor Gill a C plus and for similar reasons. He, he has not yet made an issue his own. He hasn't taken ownership of an issue or articulated a citywide vision. Um, that, that is compelling and distinct. He's brand new. He has the least tenure of anyone on council. He's barely been in the job for a year. I don't think any of this is unusual. He's solicitous, um, around issues in his ward. Uh, he is one who is definitely careful to take. All of the podium opportunities that are offered to him by the mayor and there are many. All of that is rational, considering, um, he has the shortest runway, uh, of anyone around the council table. And when you consider the time it takes to get up to speed, we're going into an election year. Um, so I, I think that councillor Gill has, um, made correct calculations in terms of. Where he should put his efforts. I, what I'd like to see in the run-up to the twenty twenty-two election from councillor Gill. Is I would like to understand why he wants to be a city councillor. That's your homework councillor Gill. Help me to understand what it is that you are there to do besides just to be, uh, on city council and to, you know, to. Have successfully run, um, in an election campaign and won a seat. I want to understand what it is that, that makes you different and what it is that, that is your issue that you're going to drive forward. That is going to make the city better. C plus, not bad.
I gave, uh, uh, Juin Gill a C. I think it is a, still a little too early to tell. Uh, because, you, you know, he came in on a, a by-election, but I do have some concerns. I, I don't see movement beyond average one way or another, and that's what causes me concerned. Because I do think there's indication that, um, he's a little too reliable on voting with what the mayor wants and that's a big problem. Uh, so unless he wants to be the next Paul Barelli, I think he's going to have to really think about, uh, who he is. Uh, and does he bring an independent voice to, to the council table? Juin is, I think, um, he cares about issues. I think he cares about very specific issues. I think some of the concerns that I have about other councillors who are overly focused on their own ward. Um, without really caring about the issues more broadly and therefore it's convenient to simply. Uh, in, in exchange and in trade-offs, forgetting what you want for your, um, constituents. And therefore to be even more cynical, your votes later by your constituents. Um, I, I, I have some, I'm cautious and I'm, I maybe in a way cautioning, uh, Juin Gill on, on that. In going forward.
Mentioned Paul Barelli and I still get chills down my spine. Don't need to hear that name. Um, you know, I agree with a lot of.
Can't promise that I won't say it again on the show.
That's, it's fine. Okay. I just, I can, I can man up for it to quote a different councillor. Um, as a new councillor, I think Juin Gill has yet to truly make a name for himself or set out priorities. I agree with what's been said. It's what I said. He is, uh, one of the councillors that's really willing to jump next to the mayor when there is a podium to be stood next to. I believe he's been both within and without his ward at events. Um, that's obviously helping to boost his profile. We look to, uh, the re-elect, the, uh, by-election results. He scraped by with a thousand and fifteen votes compared to Angelo Maragnani at eight eighty. Um, we've talked about how that can be a criticism on Angelo more so probably than a kudos to Juin Gill. Um, so he doesn't have an agenda. I don't know if he necessarily needs one. I think that he's gotten the booster that he needs by. Being next to the mayor to probably win reelection moving forward. Um, and if he's willing to just keep his head down and go with the flow, that'll probably work out for him. Going to whack what you were saying, Pat, you know, very Paul Barelli-esque. Um, and we'll, we'll just have to see where it goes. But that was a very crowded by-election field. I imagine you'll see a bunch of those people drop off. There was like thirteen, fourteen ran last time. So now that it's not completely open, you know, we'll see how it goes, but he didn't use this time strictly to his advantage. I'll say that. But we can go to award eight with Gary Kachak. Doug, you want to start?
Sure. Uh, I gave councillor Kachak a B. I think it's a pretty solid B. I've liked a lot what, of what I have seen from Gary Kachak. He is independent-minded. He's a thoughtful person. Um, I don't always agree with his position, the position that he lands on in the end. But I never left feeling like Gary Kachak didn't consider and think his way to that conclusion. And that is, um, a, a really important value. I think that that is a tool that he can build on as he gains more experience. As he becomes more comfortable as a city councillor. Um, I said last year, he needed to work on his public engagement and his profile. I still think that's true. Um, I think that councillor Kachak could go, uh, has a lot to offer in debate. And I think that he should be, be more open and more willing to debate in public, whether that's on social media. Or in the press. Um, overall, I think he's a pretty good councillor. If we had more folks like Gary Kachak around the table. Windsor would be better run.
I'll jump in. Uh, it's interesting. Again, we didn't, you know, know each other's. These are the words that I used to describe Gary Kachik as well. I think he is independent-minded and I think that's really important, particularly around a council table. That has folks that we've, um, already alluded to, um, that, that are not. And so it's, it's, that is refreshing. Um, I, I think I said that he tends to veer into the wheat sometimes, but I think that that's because he is creative and I think he is thoughtful. And he does consider, um, um. Consider the issues that are before him and that's really important. I think that, um. Next time there is a budget meeting, he should put in his calendar and try to book it off. So he's not in a vehicle. Um, I think about, that's about the only criticism that I have of Gary right now. I give him a B plus.
It's funny, reading through all of ours right now, we both, we, we all basically wrote the exact same piece for this one. I put that he's refreshingly independent and not afraid to clearly articulate his position and decision-making process. Um, his vote is one that's hard to predict, but you can always tell that it's coming from a place of reason with him, not just one that he's throwing out there. Um, and then I added, or I ended it with, I can't remember any specific moments of him outside of council chambers, except for maybe now, uh, the car incident. And I said, well, that's neither good nor bad. And that sort of goes back to other councillors. If you want to just sort of skirt by here. This, this opportunity still seems to exist. I gave him a B though. And we can end it with Don's who, uh, gave him a B plus tying with Pat. I like councillor Kachak. He has an independent voting record, seems to look at each issue as an individual. As opposed to some of the regular voting blocks on council. We didn't just phone that one in. I swear, we all came. We didn't just phone that one in, I swear, we all came to that on our own. Um, let's move on to Ward nine though, Kiran McKenzie, Pat, do you want to start?
Sure, well, uh, Kiran McKenzie, of course, um, well, we shouldn't have mentioned that Reno Bordelain, Chris Holt and Kiran McKenzie were all former co-hosts of Rose City Politics before they got elected, and then we uh ceremoniously or unceremoniously kicked them off. So again, uh, those are all friends of the show, if you will, having been co-hosts and Kiran McKenzie, much more so uh being one of the um uh earliest uh co-hosts of the show. So uh that therefore we have uh no qualms in criticizing him as much as possible, just like we disagreed every time uh we were, we were hosting the show. Kiran is an effective councillor, he's insightful, he cares about the community, he's always been engaged in issues in the community for so long as anyone has known Kiran. Um, you know, I, I think I've made this point in my Biz X column, I found that when he was first elected, he came, you know, guns blaring blazing. Uh, I, I thought there was a little bit of grandstanding there early on, just like we used to accuse him when he was on the show, he's certainly sometimes go on, goes on that length, but I, I found that he's um toned that down, um, and that's just a matter of, you know, sort of uh getting his bearings and see, and showing that he doesn't need to do that because he's good on the issues, he's principled. Um, and I think he's been a great addition to council, I gave him an A minus.
I gave Kiran a B plus, um, I agree with a lot of what's been said. Councillor McKenzie has a ton of political experience, even though it's his first term, and you can tell um he knows what he needs to do and he has set about doing it, and to Pat's point, he is capable of making adjustments as he moves along, and those adjustments have come quite quickly. I sometimes think that councillor McKenzie um stops short of pushing as hard or going as far as I would like to see him go. Um, I've certainly been surprised by how he has moderated his views on council compared to the person that we knew so well around the table on Rose City Politics. That's not necessarily a criticism, I gave Fabio Castante and Kiran McKenzie the same grade, but when you think about the political landscape in their wards, um, Mayor Dilkins is not particularly popular in Ward two, and uh there were a lot of expectations and a lot of support for um councillor Castante, he took out an incumbent, as did councillor McKenzie. But when you think about the landscape in Ward nine, Ward nine is not such a natural fit for councillor McKenzie, he has to be careful because Drew Dilkins is popular in Ward nine, just as Kiran McKenzie is popular in Ward nine. So he has to walk a pretty careful line, I think, and he does an effective job of it. Um, and, and uh I, you know, I think there's no question that, that he has grown in his skills in his short time on council, and I expect a lot from him in the future, I, I think he's an excellent councillor.
I just want to point out that maybe that's why I felt that um councillor Castante um did not get the same grade as, as, as councillor McKenzie for that reason, Doug. Um, I think that um councillor McKenzie has maneuvered or navigated the challenges that he has sort of on the ground with around and, and, and what he needs to do around the council table to, to achieve what he needs to do, has, has a, a, a much more for sort of formidable task ahead of him uh than, than Fabio Castante, who going back to um what I said, sort of. It's unknown to me why there should be so much anguish in, in sticking with what you, what you want to do.
I had wrote down, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll preface, I gave councillor McKenzie an A minus, that was the same as mine for councillor Castante. Um, I said councillor McKenzie's constituents are well-served by a representative who understands the issues, and I say that at the outset, meaning that very, very importantly, his constituency work with uh Brian Massey at the federal level there here in Windsor West has served him very well to have an immense set of knowledge of the intricacies of these local issues that puts him ahead of some of his council colleagues. This political experience as well, I think serves him well, and he's obviously clearly willing to articulately advocate for what he believes best. Um, I know that the, the caring thing doesn't really fit into the rubric that much, but he is one where that really does come across to me. Um, he is a councillor I do want to keep an eye on moving forward, obviously not just because he's someone that we all know and uh consider a friend, but I think that his, his, his values and his vision um are just going to become, I think, more nuanced as council continues to evolve here, especially again, moving back into the implementation of Windsor Works and those debates and conversations that will be coming forward. But I will wrap up Ward nine here with Dawn. This is a conflicted grade, says Dawn Maryfield, conflicted as he is a friend and real estate client. Councillor McKenzie cares passionately about the community and his ward, we are one hundred and eighty degrees opposite on politics, he gave him a conflicted B. Now, let's move on here to Ward ten, and this is uh, we'll have fun with this one before we get to the big ticket item of the show. Uh, Pat, why don't you start off again?
Ooh, okay, let me see if my mouse will help me cooperate here, sorry. Let's go, uh, we are, oh, Jim, 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 hi Jim, I think Jim told me he was upset with my, my grade last time, so I don't even remember what it was, Jim, I gave you a C plus. Um, and I know you're not going to be happy with that, uh, but uh, let me start with what I think is really positive about Jim. Um, I think that Jim, unlike other councillors, does engage and does attempt to engage in the bigger picture of the city, not just in Ward ten, but he does attend a lot of events. Um, he is out there in the community, and I think Jim does that really well. I also think that he's at his best when he cares enough to give his good attention to an issue. The issue that I have with Jim is that I don't, I don't think he does that nearly as much as he should and can. So uh, he needs to do that more often, I think that he uh really cares about some issues, and when you see it, when he does and he puts his mind to it, he's very effective and comes up with really good things. But there are times um that he just, you know what, it's not going to be an issue that he cares about. I, I'm not saying that Jim is lazy, but I think the approach, if you will, on those issues is lazy, and because there's not in it, much in it for him. Um, but they are really important issues, Jim, and I think that um, you know, those should be addressed, and so I think he's cruising for that reason. Um, and that's the only reason, you know, I, I feel with Jim that it's like my students where it's like, you know, some students perform um worse than others, but they get a better grade. Um, but then there are some students that you feel have potential, and so you, you know, give them some tough love, I think there's, there's something there for Jim, like he can elevate his game, and that's why um I, I gave him a C plus. I do think that he sometimes uh veers in a way that's just convenient, and I don't do convenience, so there you have it.
So my lower grades in university were actually because I had potential.
Yes, because it's the one, that's right, it's the one that I know you can do better, especially when people are used to this, this privilege, right, this, this um, uh, this, I, I expect this, right? I think there are some expectations there, so here to tell you, um, now, uh, you're not just gonna go on expectation alone, um, you're gonna have to earn it, and that's where it's at.
Doug, you want to go?
Sure thing, I gave Jim Morrison a B minus, which is an improved grade over last year. Uh, I think that some of the positives that Pat mentioned are really important to point out, um, because he is very good. When you look at the total um landscape around the council table and you think about the level of effort that Jim Morrison puts into engaging with people in his community, um, the level of effort he puts into being, showing up and participating in debates, even when the debate gets tough, um, those are really, really good things. Uh, he was one councillor who showed up for the Centre for Cities um discussion about the budget, and he had unpopular things to say in that room and was willing to say them, and, and that takes guts, and that takes a certain amount of um, of principle as well, and believing that engagement is important, so those are good things, and I think that those are some of the elements that, that so many people who I respect saw uh in Jim Morrison, and those are the reasons why um he had support from those folks uh leading up to the twenty eighteen election, and I think some of those are the reasons why he won. Um, the reason that he gets a B minus as a rookie councillor, um, I expect at this point in his development to be starting to articulate a vision for the city, which I cannot discern from Jim Morrison. Um, I think there's a real opportunity for Jim Morrison to distinguish himself as a person who cares about the pennies, who cares about dollars and cents, who has a good financial head on his shoulders and wants to um, wants to carefully manage the resources of the city. The problem with that is that he hasn't taken an independent line, um, rather he has fallen into the groove and the narrative that is presented by Mayor Dilkins, um, and he is content to polish his fiscal conservative credentials by participating in the sort of phony fiscal conservatism that the mayor um brings to the table, I think that's unfortunate. One last thing, um, and I'm not one who, who says stuff like this a lot, um, because I think it's reductionist and I think you should look at the actual people, but when people talk about old white guy, and when they talk about the um, what it means, what that means um when it's used as a pejorative, I think they're talking about people like Jim Morrison, and what I mean by that is, I think Jim Morrison has a really hard time um seeing outside of a very privileged perspective, I think he has a really hard time um empathizing with people who have a different background or a different perspective, and I think he has a hard time taking them seriously. That's something to work on, because I do think Jim Morrison is a good man, I think he's a man with a lot of talent and skill, and I think he can be an excellent rep for a long time if he wants to, those are the things that I think he needs to work on. Um, and, and Jim, I know you fast forwarded to this part of the um, of the show so that you could hear it. Uh, Jim, we, we still love you and we would love to have a drink anytime, B minus, do better, please.
I do, can I just say something, I know you're gonna jump in here, John, but I just do want to follow on, on, on Doug's here for a minute, because you know, as I mentioned at the top of the show, there are some that I would reconsider um in, in most cases going down in grade uh since we uh did the Biz X column, this is one that I would maybe bump, uh, this is about the one that I would bump. Um, eh, eh, this one and, and Chris Holt, because uh, because he showed up to, to the discussion in, in difficult, challenging circumstances in the sense that he had unpopular uh things to say, or at least unpopular positions, if you will, to take at that uh Centre for City, so I would actually bump Jim uh up for that reason, and also uh where everybody else has landed, so uh there's a little bit of there, but I also uh, I have to agree with Doug in, in what he has said in that, and part of that is you could see that with the things that Jim can relate to, he performs very well, and the things that he has no context uh because he, you know, eh, didn't, didn't need to know what it is to take transit or didn't need to know, you know, eh, think of it this way, Jim, think of a person who needs to take transit to go and curl, right? That's how you need to see it, and then, you know, then you can sort of um get um, get some more perspective on uh, on, on how people in the community need your voice at that table to represent them. And I'll have a drink with Jim anytime as well. But then again, I would have a drink with anyone.
Um, you know, name of the rock star, um, I wrote, but he's, uh, he's pretty tactful politician, he analyzes issues meticulously, shouldn't be surprising considering his background as a bank manager. Doug, I think you bring up such an interesting point that he really does uh fall, rest on the laurels there of his uh time as a bank manager, that's the perception that he has, it's obviously where eh, his experience, expertise comes from, that it allows for him to fall directly into that Dilkins uh track record of uh, you know, holding the line or continually looking at things from the, the cutting perspective rather than from the investment perspective. And that is a shame because I think someone with his mindset and his expertise, if he does look outside of that vein of it, can really provide a more nuanced perspective, especially moving forward with the implementation of these master plans, as I will keep bringing up. Um, he's willing to engage at council, he's willing to defend his position at council. Um, I ended up by saying he's an unassuming character, which isn't a bad thing by any means, and I think again, one of those councillors who's probably going to be able to rest on the laurels of reelection here by playing the game at a, you know, more narrowly focused uh lens than at the citywide um one. But let's say I'll give him a B minus, if he wants to buy the drink, I'll put it up to a B. Um, we will go to Dawn's though, before we move on to the mayor. Dawn says that councillor Morrison doesn't play politics, just does what he thinks is the right thing to do for the city, and his ward flies a bit under the radar, not a bad thing. I, I find, he gave him a B, I find it interesting, so many of our grades have lined up and so many of our comments have lined up, I mean, it shouldn't be surprising, we do this every week, um, and we follow these issues, so it's not like it's a unsurprising that we all observe the same things, but for us all to land on the same things, I wonder if uh, you know, the city writ large uh would give the same grades as we would. But we are at the, this is it, this is the one, Mayor Drew Dilkins, who wants to start off?
Oh, I'll take a crack at it. Um, Mayor Dilkins is a bit of an enigma to me. Um, you know, he has done some things way better this past year than he has done in previous years, particularly around his communication. Um, his media management is uh excellent, um, he is in an incredibly strong position. But he's a mayor who lacks a strong vision for the city. Um, to me, differently from all the people around the council table, the mayor must articulate a strong vision, um, and the mayor must bring that to the table, bring an agenda um to council that um council can deliberate on and react to, and Mayor Dilkins is um content to use his, his tools and his pulpit um to purely in the service of playing politics. Um, there is no question in my mind that the um, that the inflationary budget uh that he has pursued for the past several years is a political calculation, not a calculation based on what the city needs, it's what puts Drew Dilkins in the best position for um reelection or whatever he may choose to do next. Um, he's also disinterested in finding common ground with all of council, in fact, he seems to go out of his way um to punish his perceived political foes, that is not leadership, it may feel like leadership, he may look in the mirror and tell himself that that makes him tough and strong and an effective politician, I think it's weak, I think it's poor leadership, I give Mayor Dilkins a C plus.
Well, I'll jump in. And for those that are expecting me to be overly critical, um, the, the truth is that I gave him a B minus, which is his highest grade at the um, uh, in the Biz X column, I would definitely uh bring that down uh since I wrote that. I was trying to be very fair to the mayor, I think people know that I am um critical of the mayor, probably for a lot of the same reasons that Doug articulated. I, I do think that he enjoys the podium very much, and um I wrote that in Biz X before this next, um, you know, the next issue came um and arose, which I, at some point I hope that we address, but eh, he's really good at it, and he's, as I've said before, Mr. Calling in many ways, I think he has a career ahead of him uh whenever he decides to leave politics uh in the media. And what has really allowed that to um come to the fore is that he has a very talented chief of staff who has uh picked up his strength and allowed him to run with it. Uh, the criticisms, of course, of, of the mayor are that he has uh hubris, never far from the surface, and um I think that the city could do with a lot fewer of his big ideas, eh, and, and I, I try to keep my grade, which is probably why it's eh higher than you might have expected, because I tried to um grade him only on this year, so I certainly didn't take into account that he was a mayor who um cancelled transit at the beginning of the pandemic or any of those things, and I tried to- And I tried to, I tried to really base it on this year. You know, his cross the border vaccine in the tunnel ploy was an exceptionally embarrassing thing for me to see as a, as a Windsorite. I thought that went on way too long and was silly. I think that there are some other real concerns that I have about his performance and his political motivations over the, what motivates, uh, decision-making that's good for the city. And, um, I think if I had to do it again, I would drop him down for sure. But I gave him a B minus and, um, I'm going to have to live with that when it gets printed.
You can try to pick up as many, uh, copies of Biz X as possible and do a bit of whiteout and change the grade yourself. And just go redistribute them. You know, I, I, I love the joke, or I don't know if it's a joke, but the, the point about him having missed his calling in, uh, media. And there being a step out of, uh, politics to that now, just with all of the media coverage that he's done over the past year. It, it, it's been a whirlwind and it reminds me, there's a, a pretty funny movie, Long Shot with Seth Rogen, but the president in that is Bob Odenkirk. And he played a television star who became president. And then he decides to step down halfway through the term as president because he wants to shift into movies. Because that's where the real difficulty is. And I couldn't stop thinking about that. Listen, Mayor Dilkins changed his public facing politics a lot. With a new mayor's office with a heavy focus on communication, both digital and earned media. He has been everywhere. He used the pandemic to his advantage. And I'm not trying to say that in a crass way. He got his face out there. He got Windsor issues in the forefront of a national conversation. I agree with you, Pat, that some of them were incredibly embarrassing. And listeners to the show obviously know our positions about the, uh, cross-border vaccination in a tunnel. Gondola, who knows what it was, trying to turn a bus around three-point turn like it's Austin Powers style. It, it didn't look the best for us at times, but he thought it was, uh, you know, he thought it would work for him. He had a chief of staff that was willing to, uh, deploy it. And for better or worse, here we are now with it. The Windsor Works report, I keep focusing on this, but it's really had him trying to weave this web of, you know, threading the needle between holding the line on taxes or keeping it as minimal as possible, while at the same time trying to make meaningful investments to enhance the community. It's a strategy that will eventually break. You can't continue to do the minimal on one side while trying to do, uh, a perceived maximum on the other side. And I, I just saw another list, I think CBC put it out of all of the infrastructure investments over the next year and then the 10-year plan and stuff, you know? If, if we want to be serious about these master plans, we're going to have to actually be serious about allocating serious dollars to them. That means, you know, uh, raising taxes more than people might like. It might be debt financing, but it's conversations that need to be had. Um, and his strategy, it's just, it's not going to be sustainable. I gave him a C, um, and I think that's only as positive as because of what he did in the media, to be perfectly honest, for better or worse. And who wants to read Don?
Let's see, what did Don have to say? Don said, "Some city issues he fights hard for, but with the ongoing pandemic and tax revenue issues, he never saw bright, shiny, expensive capital project he didn't like." And there is, uh, the real fiscal, uh, voice coming through. So, you know, some themes here in what we talked about, I think, about what is truly fiscally, possible and what you achieve by, um, the approach you take. I have to say, John, I, I agree with a lot of what you, I just wanted to say that I agree with a lot of your take. And, and I think that the Windsor Works report coming out, um, actually improved what I gave, uh, the mayor for the grade because I felt that this, this, what a mayor, uh, should be doing in terms of the strategy and the big picture. I think there were probably things in the Windsor Work, Works Report that the mayor, um, first of all, influenced and was happy about. And then some other things that, uh, he was not as happy to see and had to maneuver around, in fact, which I think is a really good thing. There were some things that, you know, made no sense that they would be in a strata, you know, essentially a strategic document. Once you start getting into things like there should be scooters, like where I think we're getting a little too, too narrowly focused there. So you could see where there was, there were influences of the mayor. You could also see where there was truly input of things that were not the mayor, that now he's going to have to sort of figure out how that all fits. The problem with the Windsor Work Reports, since in my view, you know, since these grades were issued, is sort of the commentary of how we feel about reports that we commission and master plans that we use consultants for and all the things that we develop. Because since then, and again, hate to be cynical on this, but if you're going to pretend, well, if you're going to pretend that they're important, uh, for the hoopla of the media and, and, and prancing people forward, including some very high-profile people and important people in the community, if you will, or leaders at least of, of organizations to support this, only to turn around and say these things. And he didn't say this about Windsor Works, but I, I'm going to generalize in terms of how we feel about master plans as a result of that budget discussion. You know, if you're really only doing it superficially, um, and not, and it's not meaningful, then, um, what are we doing here?
So I agree that the Windsor Works Report is, um, really important. And, uh, it's probably the, the most important thing that Drew Dilkins has done, uh, in this term of council. But, but I think it's a really worthwhile lens to look at everything through is to consider the way that Drew Dilkins' own tendencies and preferences have undermined, um, pursuit of this goal. He announced or talked about the importance of economic diversification in 2018 in his inaugural speech. It wasn't until 2021 that we saw this report. I would submit to you that at least part of the reason for that is political timing. He wanted this to come in the, uh, run up to an election. He did not want it to be forgotten. He did not want this, this vision to be articulated in 2019, for example, when two things could happen. One, people could forget. Two, it might not be working. So I think that there was a, a, a political dimension that undermined, um, the effort. And then if you think about also the, um, the way that, as, as Pat alluded to, the way that, um, the substance of that report has been chipped away at by tactical decisions after the report came out. That's another aspect of Mayor Dilkins' choices and tendencies that serves to undermine, um, what he's trying to accomplish. And then finally, um, the, I think that that report was not all that it could have been because even the building of that report, the generation of that report was looked at through a political lens. Look, let's forget all the bullshit. That report was sole sourced to public first out of the UK for one reason and one reason only. Because the mayor felt confident that he would get a friendly report out of their work. You know, there's no question in my mind that that is the reason why that contract was sole sourced. There were, there are plenty of capable Canadian consultancies who actually have far more of a resume, um, and a background in this type of work, who could have been tapped and RFP could have been issued and we could have seen what came from it. But that wouldn't suit Drew Dilkins because he might get a report that he doesn't like. I don't think he liked everything that was in this report, but think about how much more damaging it could have been from a political perspective for Drew Dilkins, if that report had actually been commissioned and independently produced. So I think it's really, really important to think about the, um, the Windsor Works Report and all of those things that, that, uh, I touched on because it, in, it crystallizes exactly what Drew Dilkins' limits are and why he would be a far better morning host on AM 800 than a mayor.
You know, I, I, I will just, just to sort of piggyback on some comments there and not try to take away that perfect ending there that you had. If economic diversification was as crucial as it was to him at the outset there. And that was, I'm reading, it was December the 3rd of 2018 when he made that first speech. And if politics did come into play with this, as you're saying, with the timing and the rollout of where the, when the report actually hit the table for the public, if you will. Look at what's happened. That, that, that speech was December 3rd of 18, talking about GM closing Oshawa. And that was the justification for the need for this all hands on deck. And since then, I mean, listen, a lot, lot has changed. Obviously no one expected a global pandemic to hit. But during that time, we've lost not only the third, but also the second shift at Stellantis now. So that all hands on deck, if there was even any politics in terms of the delaying of the table drop of this report, I mean, we are, we're closer than we've ever been to losing our largest employers here. Um, and we really couldn't have afforded to lose those days, months, weeks whatsoever. And so moving forward, it's gonna, again, it's now this rapid, rapid quest to try to do something quickly. When, you know, for years and decades, there have been the chorus saying, we need to get serious about this sooner than later, but here we are now.
And I think the comments during the budget meeting were very telling on, on whether and how much he has embraced. And you can hashtag automobility all you want and, uh, you can do certain things. But, um, when the rubber hits the road, if you will excuse the pun, uh, we go back to, this is an auto town and that's the way we like it. And I don't think that that's just about driving cars. I, I think that there is a, a real sense that this mayor is going to be really challenged by truly, um, uh, understanding what, uh, diversification might look like for the economic benefit of, of the city.
It's such a good point, Pat. And, and, uh, to me, that's the, the original sin of Windsor Works, that the, the strategy cannot upset the apple cart. We must have a strategy that makes people feel good as well as being a strategy that is right and will work. I am completely not convinced that the focus on the auto industry, um, and using the auto industry as a springboard, uh, to diversify our economy. I'm not sure that will work and I'm not even sure that it makes sense. I'm definitely not sure that that should be the, the bet that we take all of our chips and put them in the middle of the table on, but it's extremely politically expedient. It, it, um, it sees off a lot of criticism and a lot of potential, a lot of potential pushback on the report. And I think that that again goes back to my point that it's far more political than it is, um, about effective policy.
So we're almost two hours in. I did have some plans on hashtagging critical information here. What are we going to do about this gang?
Think we're going to have to give the audience what they want and give them another show.
All right.
What do you guys think?
Let's wrap this one up and I, I'm sorry, you know, for anybody watching and wondering why my background is, is this. You're going to have to tune into the next show, I guess, to find out.
We're all, Doug and I are going to have to find different backgrounds, but I look forward because maybe Don will be able to join us for this next one. For the summary though, for Mayor Dilkins, that was a C from Don, a C plus from Doug, a C from myself. John and Pat, where do you stand with the revisions?
No, that's fine. Leave it, leave it where it is. That's a B minus.
B minus then. Well, thank you everyone for listening to Rose City Politics. This was our city council report card for 2021, heading into an election year next year. It is December 23rd. We're, we're going to be recording you a December 24th episode. You're all welcome. We, I think we still have a plan to give you a end of the year episode as well. So this is truly the gift that keeps on giving. We'll be back tomorrow. We'll be back on the 29th for our year in review. Our regular panel today, today, tonight included Doug Sartori, Pat Papadias and myself, John Lidkey. If you don't already support us, please head to patreon.com forward slash Rose City Politics. It would mean the world to us if you could help us out here, heading into the new year and election year. We are in Biz X Magazine, bizxmagazine.com and all, on all of your favorite podcasting and social media apps. And Rose City Politics has been able to broadcast live on tape, thanks to the kind support of Leuna 625, Building Better Communities. We'll be back at it with two more episodes in 2021. See you next time, folks.